I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen meeting to order. This is April 21st. It's just about 7:30. It would not be offensive to us or rude if if people who did present went home, went off camera. Do that at your own will. By you all, it's not rude. Sometimes you have to say that. So I've called the meeting to order additional agenda consent items. Are there any? I don't believe so. So delegations, would anyone here on the call like to speak to the Board of Selectmen this evening?
Mark, I, we all got an email and I got a specific request to read something into the minutes I talked to you about. It was from Camille Alberti dated today, April 21st. Hello, Board of Select members. You will notice on your agenda this evening that the Board of Finance did not take action on an appropriation request to fund additional building department expenditure for the use of a revenue source. I'm forwarding the explanation to you from our auditors, and I think you'll agree it's self-explanatory. I'd like you to please read this email into the record. Thanks in advance for agreeing to make the correct appropriation request. And it starts with the email chain. It was from Camille to our accounting firm on April 15th. Hello, Matthew. I hope you will be able to provide advice as to the appropriate handling of an appropriation request made by our building department slash first selectman. The revenue generated from building permits in our current fiscal year 2021 far exceeded the budgeted amount for that revenue source. The building department has made an appropriation request for additional funds to cover salaries for building inspectors for the remainder of the year. The appropriation request included an increase in the budgeted building revenue account to cover, in quotes, these additional expenses. I'm uncertain as to whether this accounting entry is permissible under GAAP, which I think is general accepted accounting principles, even if there is no such rule prohibiting this accounting, the request to transaction does not appear to appropriate to me. As our audit manager from Blum Shapiro, can you please provide an opinion to me on this matter? Thank you very much for your help. Best, Camille Alberti, Chair of Finance. And there was a response from Matthew Bonham from that firm on April 15th. Hi, Camille, GAAP would not come into play here as what you're referring to relates to the budgetary basis of accounting. We don't typically see revenue budgets being adjusted during the year, although it can be done. However, adjusting the revenue budget does not mean you can in turn adjust the expenditure budget without taking the proper action, meaning you would still need to approve either a transfer from another department, or you would need an additional appropriation. Hope this helps, Matt. And that is the base of the conclusion of that email chain that was asked by the Chair of the Board of Finance to be read into the record under public domain.
Anyone else like to say what a selectman's evening? Okay, approval of the minutes. We have a special meeting of March 24th, 2021.
This is Kevin Sear. I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes of March 24, 2021 is submitted.
Mark Salerno.
Second. Again, Salerno on the second there. Any further comments or corrections? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Eyes have it. We have a special meeting of March 31st.
Kevin Sear, I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes of March 31st, 2021 is submitted.
Second, Mark Salerno.
Mr. Salerno, seconds. Any comments or corrections? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstain? Okay.
This is Kevin Sear. I'll move to approve the special meeting minutes of April 7th, 2021 is submitted.
I'll second. Dan Cunningham.
Corrections, comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstain? We have a regular meeting.
Yes, this Kevin Sear, I'll move to approve the regular meeting minutes of April 7th, 2021 is submitted.
Second, Paul Daigle. Mr. Daigle, thank you. Any corrections or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any abstain or opposed? Opposed, abstain? Okay, there we go. We get, we got that out of the way. We have a consent calendar.
Kevin Sear, I'll move to approve the consent calendar for the meeting of April 21st, 2021 in the amount of $718.67.
We have multiple seconds. Sandy, take your pick. All of, any, any, any corrections, comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstain? Okay, thank you. You see, we had a media agenda tonight, but it's really, they're very, very quick items. Unless you choose to make them longer items. The lot of them is self-explanatory. With us tonight is Joe Braga. We'll go to new business to a special appropriation of $44,475. The 2021 nuclear safety emergency preparedness. That's not yours, Joe. I'm sorry. It's a grant that we get because we're a nuclear town, folks. We know about that. This was a last minute grant that came through. Let me just get to my notes. Because I told everybody to stay home. Everybody's working hard enough and, and, and there's also a Board of Finance meeting that they scheduled the same night of our, as a regular meeting. And I have half the people over there dealing with that. If you see the, if you have the readout here of the request, the special appropriation, we have seven portable radios, 42,000 and change, and an Optiplex 7080 tower, accessory software labor of $2,300 for the total request. The reason why we're throwing this, not throwing it at you, but presenting it to you tonight, and rather quickly, we want to move it through the process, is we only have until the end of the year, I believe, to spend this, the end of the fiscal year, June, to spend this money. So we have to move it through the appropriations process. What's also happening is the executive orders are beginning to expire, and this will actually have to go to a town meeting now. So when we start doing these appropriations, we've been getting away with, because it's a smaller amount or has to do with public safety or something, we don't have to go to a town meeting. We're going to have to figure out, figure out a way to have town meetings again, and we'll have a discussion on that later in our agenda. But this is a, an item that'll be paid for through 100% through the NSEP grant funding, which is the nuclear, I had it, the nuclear safety emergency preparedness. So we're asking for your approval.
This is Kevin Sear. I'll move for a special appropriation for the 2021 nuclear safety emergency preparedness, NSEP grant. Move to approve the special appropriation in the amount of $44,475 to account number 01-70-725-224-001, NSEP radios and related equipment to cover the cost of purchasing portable radios and related computer equipment for the EOC and forward to the Board of Finance for approval. The source of the funds are the nuclear, nuclear safety emergency preparedness grant, and this requires a town meeting.
Second, Mark Salerno.
Thank you, Mr. Salerno. Are there any discussions?
I have a question. Were these, these were not part of our regular budget that we just approved?
No, these are, these are over and above.
Over and above, okay.
Over and above, and yeah, this gets us that much further down the road.
Okay.
Yes.
That'll take away from a need for possibly next year in the budget. Thank you.
That's right. They're, they're needed items. They were not just freewheeling here. We're buying things that are necessary for public safety. Indeed. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, no.
Where are the funds coming from until we get the reimbursement? Because we're putting money into the, into the account to purchase them, but where are they coming from?
I wish I could answer that. The, the, I don't, I can't answer that question because, let me see if I can. We're going to get the funds.
Before the purchase?
Yes.
Okay, it's not a reimbursement.
It's not reimbursement. We're going to receive a check for 44,400. And we're moving that, when we get a check, we have to put it somewhere.
Understood. I'm sorry.
You're accepting the grant, accepting the check, if you will, and then going ahead and purchasing. But that has to be completed by June 30th, my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? We'll call the motion. All in favor say aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Any abstain? Okay.
Mark, I haven't heard Roseanne recently. Is she with us or muted?
She's not muted. Roseanne, is that you? Thanks for pointing that out, Paul. Roseanne, is that her number, Sandy?
That's her number. Yeah.
Hey, Roseanne. We heard you a couple times. Thank you again, Mr. Daigle. You point out that she made a second that I heard late, and I don't think I heard from her since. Roseanne, we cannot hear you.
I think Sandy's taking care of it right now.
You're not muted, so call back in or, I don't know. We'll move on because we have a, I'm hearing. Now I'm hearing her a little bit.
I think Sandy's on the phone with her.
Can you hear me now?
Now we can hear you.
Yes.
Okay. Well, I voted on everything.
Well, let the, affirmatively, I assume?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am. I will let the record show just that, and thank you for putting that on the record. You have been voting all along. Sorry, we didn't hear you.
It's unusual, isn't it?
Yeah, but whatever, whatever button was accidentally pressed, I think you found the solution. Next on our agenda, we are going to invite Joe Braga to speak. This guy is incredible. In his spare time, he writes public safety manuals because he's got nothing better to do. So he's, he's getting our, our books in order, our, our safety manuals in order, our OSHA things in order. And this public safety manual, Public Works Department Safety Manual, is kind of procedural. So he thought best, I thought best, that we have the Board of Selectmen endorse it, if you will, or, or, whatever we're doing here, approve it as, as we set policy in the town. So we did send you a PDF on this. It's extensive. I don't know that, well, maybe Mr. Daigle is in the safety business, maybe a little bit with Mr. Salerno too, but, and of course, Mr. Cunningham's a lawyer. So we do have a lot of expertise on this panel, but we also have Joe Braga, who wrote this, authored it, went through conflicting info with our unions, and of course, OSHA guidelines and all the other things that apply to our town. Joe, do you want to fill in and then we can open up for questions?
Yeah, just a few, a few things on this is, there really isn't much, you know, we're responsible, I'm responsible as department head for the safety of my employees through OSHA. In the employee handbook, which is about 25 years old, there's like one or two pages talked about safety, but there's a mishmash of policies. And so about a year ago, I set forth with setting up a Public Works Safety Subcommittee to put this thing together. The reason why it's Public Works is a lot of the safety items are department specific. Like, it'd be really hard for me to put together a manual that also includes the police because I don't know what they do as far as the, the safety features. So I know that, my goal was a year ago to, if OSHA walks in the door, I can pull out a manual. The irony is, I had this manual out, 17 copies of it in the town hall on, on the thing. It was open to the section says, when OSHA knocks, and OSHA walked in the door and gave us some inspection about six weeks ago. They were super impressed that we were doing that. They were kind of freaked out that when they walked in, the 17 manuals were opened up to when OSHA comes in, what do you do? But it certainly helped us in the OSHA random inspection. We were last inspected about 12 years ago. So I suggested to Mr. Nickerson that because I'm responsible for the people in my department, water, sewer, public highway, and Dave Putnam is piggybacking on this document as well, that we cover our people for as far as OSHA. So because it is town policy and there is an element of thou shalt now that they have to follow it, we suggested to have it in front of the selectmen so that they endorse it. The next thing is I train the staff on it, and this is what we follow. So we no longer have to have a hodgepodge of policies that no one knows anything about. This is going to be the Bible of the safety stuff. So that's where we're at. And if you have any questions, I'd certainly like to answer them for you.
Joe, is this a manual that you'll, you'll ask like employees to go through and maybe like sign that they reviewed it?
Yeah, one of the pages, page like five, actually has a sign off page. What you have to do with OSHA, and we found it out when our inspections, they go to the, like, the newest employee, and they, they, they like walk into the supervisors and say, you know, okay, hi, how you doing? Where's your newest employee? So, and the reason I say that is that it's my responsibility to train our employees on this document, sign off the document, and that, that's what they should, also, yes, they will be trained on this, and this is what they need to follow.
Is this anyone that works in Public Works?
Uh, yeah, I mean, the field personnel especially. I mean, I have 50 people under me, so, but, you know, some of them are office staff. They fall under different criteria, but, you know, water and sewer and the highway sanitation, they all run into a lot of hazard, job hazards. One of the things in here is analysis of job hazards. Most towns get dinged for that, but I had this in this manual as far as assigning the hazards, which helps us. So, yeah, the office staff still has to go through some staff, but some trainings and other stuff, but not anywhere to, to the confined space or all the other things for the people in the field.
Awesome. Now, just one more comment. This is great. It's good to have it all documented at one place, so there's no excuse if somebody says they didn't know the policy. It's all here. So I think this is fantastic. Thank you for leading us up.
Yeah, thanks.
The questions for Mr. Braga?
Just, just a comment, you know, I, of course, I didn't read the whole thing, but I went through a lot of it and reviewed some of the sections. I was quite impressed. It's, it's really great that, as Mark said, it's, it's all in one place and, and it's something you can really turn to if you have a concern or a question or how to handle a situation. Will, will there be a couple of copies around where, where it's available to, to be reviewed by employees? How will that work?
Well, I'm planning on making a copy for, available to all my employees, especially the field personnel, but they will be trained. But yeah, there'll be extra copies posted that they can always refer to it, but it's obviously highly worth the investment of the, a quarter of a cent for each page to print off a safety manual so they don't get hurt, not only for their, so they can go home at night, but also so we don't have any workman's comp issues. So yes, we'll be making plenty of copies of this and distributing it. Believe it or not, the actual supervisor version's twice as thick because it has all the actual standard. It has all the training things, all the toolbox talks. It has a lot more stuff in it that helps the supervisors because the employees typically look to the, to the supervisors for direction, and I want to make sure my supervisors know what they, what they, what's expected of them.
Yeah, that's good. Nice work, Joe.
Yep, thank you.
Joe, regrettably, I didn't have a chance to read it, and I do have quite a bit of experience, so I commend you on putting it together. I will take the opportunity to read it. Do you do any OSHA 30-hour training or any OSHA 10-hour training for your employees?
We, we have done in the past. I have a whole, so one of the things I talked about, the supervisor's, my supervisor's manual, you don't see here, is a training matrix that goes over all the required trainings. And we are behind in our training a little bit because of COVID, so I'm trying to catch up. OSHA 10 incompetent person training is, is very high on my priority. One of the things, confined space training, we're, we're lining that up right now for all our sewer and personnel. We have a chainsaw safety training class next Thursday, a full day class.
Program, alright, good.
I'm trying to prioritize the most important things that are hazards to our employees and getting them into training, but competent person is definitely high up on that list.
And I know you'll, as new employees come on board, you'll have them go through reading it and go through the required training sessions, but is there going to be any periodicity that you want your employees to refresh their knowledge and understanding of the manual?
Well, well.
A year, a couple of years, or, because there is a half-life. When you look at all the requirements to do things, there is a half-life with the workforce on retaining it. So it's something you'd consider if it's not already part of the plan.
Well, some of the things, the Bloodborne, Hazcom, the Conference of Fine Space, they're all required as annual trainings anyways by, by OSHA, and I was, made sure I was aware of that by the OSHA person that came in. But we were pretty good. The problem I find, and I could, I know it's a fact, so I'm not going to feel like I'm bad to admit this, but most towns are pretty safe, but not OSHA safe in the sense, following all the policies and documenting all the trainings. And that's my goal, my people. We will now be OSHA safe. You have to do, we have to record all the people that are in the trainings, and you can't take any shortcuts. Just, and I was very clear to my employees that never to take a shortcut. You always need to do it right, safely. Never think you had to rush through the job because Joe wants it done fast. That's not the message.
The hazard assessment will be the best thing for the workers and the supervisors to do on each and every job. Even on day two of doing the same job, the situation can change, and that is a team effort to identify the hazards, mitigate them to avoid the injuries. And I'm, so that's going to be a key part of your plan because it's the people thinking before they act that helps prevent the injuries.
Yep.
Thanks for that, Paul. Any other comments?
Oh, Kevin Sear, I'll just move to approve the Public Works Safety Manual as presented.
I'll second. I'll take Roseanne on that one. Roseanne, thank you. We got you. I'm glad. Good confirmation that you're there. Any other comments, questions? Well done, Joe. Just again, over the top, well done, as always with your work. All in favor say aye.
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 Are there any, are there any opposed? Any abstain? Thank you. It is now official policy of the town. Special appropriation of the Morris Building asbestos remediation. Joe, you've been doing a lot of work on this as well, and I know Mr. Salerno was involved. Why don't you bring us up to speed, Joe?
Yeah, and I apologize. I have all the backup documentation, all my quotes, everything except the memo that I gave you. I just looked through my file and it's not there. So I know all the information off the top of my head, but if I forget something and you have a memo in front of me, please help me along. So it came to my attention that there was some, there might be an asbestos issue in the, so everyone knows the Morris Building is the, it's the garage of the Niantic Fire Department. So we instantly got Mystic Air Quality out there to do asbestos testing. That, that testing came back that they found that there was asbestos in the tiling and in the, I believe, the mastic. So, um, I, we instantly, I met with the gentleman from Mystic Air Quality, I believe it was two Fridays ago, I met with Dave Wiseman, industrial hygienist, and also Chief Barone. And we kind of came up, came up with a, that the Niantic Fire Department would stay out of that space. Unless it was an emergency, they would stay out of the space until we can figure this out. But this is really, we need to get this thing taken care of for this, you know, talk about safety, the safety of the firemen down there, not knowing that there's asbestos and that those tiles are getting, are, are damaged and getting, they're deteriorating. So that's the kind of stuff that you try to stay away from. So anyways, got three quotes. What I told Chief Barone is what, once we get this thing approved, and I am on the meeting for Board, if you guys approve this, and I am on the meeting for Board of Finance tomorrow night, if we give the contractor the go-ahead by Friday, state statute requires a contractor to give 10 days' notice on doing asbestos work. So yeah, and it's, it's 10 calendar days, not business days. So after 10 days, then they can get in there and Niantic Fire Department will pull out all, the problem right now is they have two boats in there, a truck, and they have a lot of equipment in there that they need. So we're trying to get this done before the real busy season. And so that's the thing is I have two quotes that you have, but Board of Finance asked for a third quote, so I have it. You don't have it in your package because I got it today. It was from HazPros for 9450. You, you guys have a quote for 9300 for EGI, and you have a quote from Abatement Plus for 13, 325, uh, 235. So this, this meets the purchasing policy, three quotes, even though it is an emergency. And recommending that, making a motion, and this is where I don't have the actual wording, but the motion of moving forward with EGI for the 90, I, I believe my amount was 11,000 because, because I also want to encapsulate, yeah, I want the, the, the reason being is Morris 9300, like, I just got the bill for Mystic Air Quality for their original test, for their original report, and there's a little more work that they need to do, plus some sampling. So 11,000 should cover everything, and I think you guys can read the motion unless you have any other questions.
Okay, this is Kevin Sear. I'll move to appropriate, to approve a special appropriation in the amount, in an amount not to exceed $11,000 to be expended from account 01-01-120-200-500 contingency for the purpose of abating asbestos in the Niantic Fire Department Morris Building Garage and forward to the Board of Finance for approval.
I'll second that motion.
I got Dan on that one. And thank you both for the motion and being second. Joe, thank you for the quick work on this. And, and Mark, your, your, your involvement on this is noted as well. Thanks for bringing this to our attention. Much appreciated. Any other comments, questions?
Just a comment. Oh, go ahead, Dan.
Uh, where, where is the company that you're recommending located?
Ron? Oh, oh, I'm sorry. That's not correct. They're Middletown.
Middletown.
So HazPros, the, the company that was a little more was West Hartford. EGI is Middletown, and this plus is Bloomfield.
And what was the major factor that led you to decide that this was the best company?
The company Mystic Air Quality that did our testing, that the industrial hygienist, they said that all three companies that they were, they do this kind of stuff all the time, and they recommend all, all three of these companies. So knowing that they've been around them and that they can do the work, I took the recommendation of the, of the expert in, in, going along with their recommendation that all three contractors are fully capable to do properly in, in accordance with state statutes.
Okay. And the equipment that will have to be moved out of there, is that going to be stored in the parking lot?
Yeah, I just know, I was going to mention, and I'm not sure if he's on, but Chief Barone is on here now, he's muted, but it's my, so he might want to chime in, but I, it's my understanding, all that stuff's going to have to pull out. What is arrangements of where it's going to go is certainly up to the department and the chief, but everything is going to have to come out of there when this happens. And that is part of the cost of this work is to, they, they do an enclosure inside, so it's fully, everything is contained. You know, and, and that will all be overseen by Mystic Air Quality. That's why I want to make sure I have some extra money on top of 93 to 11 to make sure that Mystic Air can help with this, this, to get it done.
And if you mentioned this, that I missed it, I apologize, but how long would this take?
It was my understanding that it would be about a week. What my recollection, if that's not right, chief, let me know, but I think they said it would be about a week to get this thing. What they're going to do is to grind out through all their proper means, but grind out the, the damaged asbestos tiles so that it will then become a concrete floor like a typical garage, and then they won't have to worry about this ever again, and they'll have a, you know, a space free and clean of any kind of contaminants or hazards.
So this is only going to be on the first floor?
Correct. We, we didn't, we didn't go anywhere in the building except on that, in that garage, and that's all this is about. It says it in the report, Mystic Air Quality's report, that floor space is about 1430 square feet.
Okay, well, if that building is quite old, I don't remember the exact date of it, but is there any possibility that this is located elsewhere in the building as well?
It could be, but I don't think they use those other spaces. And again, that's, I, I do know that, that the, the fire, I mean, we were in there. I was in there with the chief, that they absolutely used the, the garage. I mean, one of their, one of their main, you know, frontline pickup trucks is in there. They have two boats in there. The chief has said that that one boat is used all the time. So that's the space that we're needing to rectify. I don't think anyone uses upstairs.
Okay, so it's been quite a while since I've been in that building, but I'm positive that on the second floor, that that is tiled also. And so if we know of the presence of asbestos, it, I think that we would need to make certain then that that second floor is sealed off, or decide if that does have future use, if it's less expensive while they're here, to have the second floor done as well.
Chief, Chief Barone is here.
Chief Barone is here. Do you want to make comment? Chief, can you unmute yourself? Do you know, yeah, there you go.
How's that?
Can you hear me? Yes, perfect.
The upstairs is wooden floor.
Okay. Problem solved.
That's why we have the chief.
Mark, this type of asbestos is considered non-friable. It's contained in the tile and in the mastic. It's contained in the tile and in the mastic. The only time it becomes a health concern is when the tile starts to disintegrate. And it can become dust with vehicles going over or people walking over it. So that's why it's a space that's being used. But if there was tile in another room and it was not broken up and in good shape, it doesn't provide, pose a health risk to people walking on the tile floor. So if this floor is starting to break apart, it's not to be removed before it causes a problem. And Mystic Air, I work with them extensively at my facility. They're a very knowledgeable group. And if they recommended all three abatement companies, then you shouldn't have any problem.
So I'll just, I just had, thanks, Joe, for getting this done so quick. Obviously, it was me that asked him to look at it. It was the nine by nine tile that was cracked. And just so everyone knows, if you do see a lot of nine by nine tiles that was put in before the eighties, a lot of times that, that is asbestos. So thank you for moving fast. I know we want to, we don't want to interrupt Chief Barone's work. I know he uses those boats. So I appreciate you getting this done fast and I hope we can get this done quickly. You guys could use that room safely. So thanks.
Thank you. Thank you for the work on this. Any further comments? We're looking for an approval here. We have a motion, I believe, on the table. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And there any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Thank you all for your input on that. Thanks, chief, for, your timing was perfect coming into the meeting. Discussion of possible approval of the revised fees for trash cans and bulky waste and disposal. Mr. Burgah made comments about this when he presented his budget to us. That things were a little out of whack and he'd like to correct some of that. Joe, could you run through this real quick?
It's just two components, the trash cans and then the bulky waste. I'm going to talk about trash cans first. If you call up and you want a trash can in this town, it costs $110. It costs us $90. So it's not like we're making much on it, but you know, there's, there's a cost of us doing business and everything like that. But there's a little bit of a loophole in the system that someone could buy four garbage cans. And the whole purpose is not, like, everyone pays for that person's trash. We got a call yesterday from some lady that wanted an extra garbage can because she wanted to clean out her basement. So Town of East Line is going to pay for the, for all her trash to go in that second can because she wants to pay $110. So we're trying to make a disincentive to have people, and you know, nothing, it's a business in town. I think we're working with them well. But if you drive down on Tuesday mornings and see that Main Street, there's about 100 garbage cans out there now. Because instead of having dumpsters, they just get six cans, 10 cans and 110 a piece. And then they never have to pay for trash again. So by having the 220, it kind of, it's going to open up some eyes and they're going to ask a question. But it's going to be an education of, you know, well, you don't pay for that. So it's, it's kind of like, I mean, self-explanatory, we're trying to not have people use more trash that everyone pays for. It's kind of on a user base and having a $220 for the second can. You know, allows the town to have a little bit of extra income to make up for that person that's using more trash than they should. And I'll answer any questions, but let me just tell you about the second part. This board I brought in front of it now two times in the last three, four years to adjust the transfer station fees. We're not trying to make a killing by any stretch of imagination, but we're trying to keep up with times. Every time I come to you about two, about a year later, Will-O-Matic Waste, our vendor, keeps raising our costs. So that it shrinks him out that we're, that the town is making on that. As I said, since the last time you guys adjusted the fees, and there was a, there was a comprehensive fee schedule. The only fee of really that has gone up on us since then is bulky waste. We have a Will-O-Matic Trust at the transfer station almost every day, picking up a new 40-yard roll off. They increased their fees on their pickup for, by 3% and by the tip fee by 6%. So I kind of did simple math and figured 4.5% increased to 7.25 cents bulky waste by 4.5%. And came up with a fee of 7.076 cents on the bulky waste. That is additional about 7,100 in revenue. And that revenue has helped because only about four years ago, we were taking in about 115,000 in revenue at transfer station. And now this year, I think we're shooting for 200,000. So that certainly helps the kitty as far as a user based, you know, this is another user base. If you use the bulky waste, then you got to pay a little more. So I think both of these have been, are very fair to all, to all the taxpayers, not just the ones that want to use it a lot.
I'll make note that as you see at the bottom of this worksheet, this is a board of selectmen decision. We don't go to finance or town meeting. We set the fees throughout town. In most places, the exception of Parks and Rec especially. Where Dave is here tonight, I want to make sure the record's clear on that. I don't set the fee rates. Don't, don't call me. Call Dave. Any comments on the, the two items?
I think, I think it's, I think it's very fair. I raised the issue a couple of meeting, board meetings ago about the number of cans out on Main Street. And whether or not this was really costing us additional money. And I believe it is. And I don't think that for the individual homeowner who has one can, I don't think that it's fair for them to have to bear the burden of commercial enterprises. Using what's a general public service. I mean, a small business that wants to put out one can like everybody else, that's fine. But I think that certainly, well, I'll just leave it at that. I support this proposal.
Thank you. Thank you, Roseanne. Kevin, you were going to say something too?
Joe, would this also apply to a recycle can as well?
No.
Okay. Some of them wanted a second recycle can.
So in the, in the Town of East Line, you get your first free, first can free. The second can, we used to give a 96 gallon can. Now we're only giving a 64 gallon can free. If you want a second recycling, you got to pay 110. But we're trying to promote recycling. So I don't want to, if there's a choice of having a next. And the other thing with recycling that makes it tough is we collect every other week. So people are a little hard pressed if they're trying, if we're telling them to recycle more and we don't pick up. You know, I've had the question with people wanting to pick up recycling once a week and pick up garbage every other week. Until they realize in the summer that whole town would stink like garbage if we don't pick up every two weeks. So I think the recycling one, we're going to keep at 110.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Joe, thanks. Yeah. It does make sense.
Yeah. This Kevin, sir, I'll move to approve raising the cost of more than one garbage can to $220 per can.
Second, Mark Solano.
Motion and second. And any further comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Is there another motion?
Yes, this Kevin's here. I'll move to approve raising the cost of bulky waste disposal at the town's transfer station. The seven point or 7.6 cents per pound.
Second, Paul Daigle.
Any comments? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain?
Okay.
Joe, also too, just so people know, there is, if you go with bulky waste, there is a minimum charge. Yeah, sometimes it goes for people to know that. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is the acceptance of Partridge Court. I believe that is up in the orchards. As you know, that development is being built and that circle continues. It's way up in the back. And that's been a very successful neighborhood. It's been built and, and many, many fine families have moved into town. And they're ready to, for us to accept Partridge Court as, as a town road. It meets all the requirements, you know, of quality and of space, of lighting, of drainage. And we're now ready to accept it as a town road. When we get into the building of these things, you know, we, we work with the developer. I'm sure we've been picking kids up. I'm sure, Joe, I'm sure you've been plowing the roads up there. It's where it's safe and all that. But now it's an official town road. And, and it's been checked out by the board, well, by the building. I should say the planner, Gary Geishel, but also our town attorneys have looked this over as well. Are there any questions?
Kevin Sari, I'll move the fine. Whereas the East Line Planning Commission has recommended that the town accept for public highway purposes, a certain roadway designated as Partridge Court in the Orchard subdivision, as more particularly described on a map depicting said road and an indeed conveying said road. And the drainage easement appertuinement thereto. And whereas the town engineer and director of planning have determined that said road and appertuences have been constructed and installed in accordance with the town's highway standards and approved plans. It is resolved that the board of selectmen hereby accepts as a public highway said road and appertuinances designated as Partridge Court in its entirety and the associated drainage easement as depicted on the plan entitled Plan Showing Property of the Orchards of East Line Development Incorporated to be conveyed to the Town of East Line Partridge Court. East Line, Connecticut, scale one inch equals 40 feet sheet, one of one dated January 15th, 2021, job number 11-006. As a town road, subject to the developer's execution and delivery of a deed and related documents as approved by the town attorney. That's it.
Second, Mark Solano.
Thank you, Mark. Any further comments?
And that has some of your attorney words in there too, I noticed.
Yeah.
You did fine. You did fine.
You know, we, we pay them for the, by the word, not by the hour. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? It's nice to welcome Partridge Court into our, into our, well, into our town, I guess, and those living there. And Joe, that's more responsibility. When we say we have 112 miles, it's 114 miles of road, you can add another mile. Or two tenths of one or something.
Yeah, it's a nice neighborhood.
It's a great neighborhood.
All right, good night.
Thank you, Joe. Good night. Next on our agenda is a redo. I'm going to give you a little bit. I'm going to try to stay out of the mud. On this, we did everything perfectly right. Anna did everything perfectly right on that. She was chastised at a board of finance meeting by its chair and publicly embarrassed. Citing that we couldn't do it the way that we had done it, that their charter didn't allow it. That she was going to call the auditor and you see the results of that. Called the auditor, auditor said, well, you can do it. You're just going to do it this way and that way. But it does not violate our charter the way we proposed to do it. It's not a big deal. Nobody's got their, we're not dying on this hill. But at the board of finance meeting, she tried to change where the funds were going to come from. And I reminded her that that's not the lane that the board of finance drives in. That they were, they should stay in their own lane. It's the board of selectmen that pass things to the board of finance for approval. She doesn't get to decide where it's coming from. So therefore it's coming back to you with an adjustment and we will move it ahead. I will also just tell you that I spent a little bit of time with our town attorney, who also suggested not only is this allowable the way we had crafted it, but it matches past practice. But here we are. So let's, let's call the motion. I don't have anything else written up on this.
Mark, before we have a motion, was this discussion of this concern raised before the public meeting? Or was it brought forward without any previous knowledge to?
It was, it was a gotcha moment, if you will. I know that the chair, and I know because I've been chair of zoning, is responsible for putting out an agenda and therefore having a, a good knowledge of what's on his or her agenda. As well, the chair spoke to the department head at length, I believe in hours worth of conversation that very day. It never came up. It came up at the meeting in, in, in the I gotcha moment. So it was a moment that was, you know, a kind of a public chastising, if you will. But also just threw everything into confusion. Here we are again. It is what it is. I don't want to fight it. I don't want to send it back the way it was. I just want to move on. They're apparently in a marathon. By the way, they scheduled the board of finance deliberation meeting on the same night. I couldn't be there because we have a board of selectmen meeting. So, you know, of course, usually the selectman's there to defend his budget and I'm here tonight. So I'll be spending quality time with them after our meeting. So thank you for the question. No, it wasn't brought up. And we would ask anybody, and I, I'll ask, remind you, you selectmen, that when, when there's something on the agenda that you, that hits you a little funny or you're disagreeable to, if nothing else, let's have a one-on-one conversation. Because you might be pointing out something that needs to be pulled from the agenda. Because you might be meaning something that backs up something on the agenda. Just call, we'll call the town attorney, we'll call the auditors, we'll call, we'll bring in Anna, we'll bring in Joe, one of the chiefs, whatever it is. Let's make sure we have the backup so we can fully explain it. And, and we do that and we work very well together. So I, I appreciate your professionalism when it comes to running this town. That good question. Any others? Kevin, want to read a motion?
This Kevin, sorry, I'll move to approve, this Kevin, sir, I'll move to approve a special appropriation and transfer in the amount of $21,800 from account number 01-01-120-200 contingency to the following expenditure accounts. $3,000 to 01-01-104-100-311 admin clerical. And $18,800 to 01-01-104-100-212 building official and forward to the board of finance for approval.
Second, Paul Daigle.
Motion and second. And I appreciate you guys realizing we're just going to compromise here. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Opposed. I oppose.
Okay, man, would you like to comment? I did, I did not ask for a comment before I called for the vote. I usually do. I'm pretty good at that. Did you have something to say, Roseanne?
I believe that we followed the correct procedure to begin with. And I feel that having to change to favor someone else's personal opinion is just inappropriate. So I believe that our, our original proposal was the correct way to do it and the correct procedure.
Thank you. We'll make, make sure the, the record states that. I too am disappointed, as you can tell. But again, I'm just trying to get the wheels of government to move along. And this is an important thing to make sure we cover a gap in our, in our budget. And that's what it's all about. So I appreciate your guidance, Roseanne, on this and your comments. Okay. Last on our agenda is, is something that, well, it's, it's, it's easy and it's not. So the governor has issued an executive order that said boards of selectmen, in our case, can change the dates of their charter, notwithstanding. So we can go into our charter, disregard the charter and change the charter dates as described and prescribed. So that was allowed. He also said executive orders will expire on May 20th. And some of those have to do with absentee ballots. Oh, by the way, you can change your dates around so you can have mail-in absentee ballots, no excuse. But the way our charter read, we couldn't have gotten that done. And most towns are the same way, it turns out. So he did two things. He allowed us to change the dates. And he also said, if you'd like the absentee ballots, and everybody would, it's, we're still in the middle of this COVID thing. And there's some people still skeptical and God knows where the country and the state's going as far as absentee ballots and the election laws and all that. I'm not going there. But in order to do that, we needed to change the referendum date one day backwards. Because his, all these executive orders expire on May 20th. That was the date of our referendum. Why he didn't push that to June or June 30th or something, I don't know. Many towns I've discovered, June, May 20th is around the time they have their referendum. So ours is May 20th. We're backing it up one day so we fit within the, the before definition of his executive orders. What we also have to do, however, is move our town meeting back a week. What we also have to do, however, is move our town meeting back a week. Our town meeting is supposed to be May tenth by charter. And we're going to suggest that you you adopt moving it back a week to May third, which will allow the clerks to print the ballot. And anybody who requests a ballot being mailed to them will have enough time, almost three weeks, two and a half weeks, to send the ballot out and either have it dropped off or mailed back. And we will suggest that people drop it off. We'll have a drop box in front of town hall. If you only had ten days or eleven days to print the ballots, to get them out in the mail, the way the post office has been lately, and then and all that, I don't want to disenfranchise anybody. I don't want to cater to it either, but I think this is the best way to do it. And 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 we're moving everything up a week. May third is what I'm asking you to accept for town meeting. The nineteenth of May referendum, that town meeting will be live. We're going to try to hybrid it. We're only allowed a hundred people in the high school auditorium. We have secured that space. If it's over five hundred people, we're only allowed a hundred. If we get more than a hundred, we're going to have people go in the lobby and get on their phone, or look for volunteers to leave or whatever. But if we're in around a hundred, and we don't usually get a hundred, and I don't think we're going to have a very controversial budget this year. As you know, town meetings adjourn directly to a referendum. But we will have two items to vote on that evening. One will be the capital plan, which is part of our charter. We have to adopt a capital plan. I'll run through that real quick and ask for a vote. The second one will be the forty-four thousand dollar appropriation you approved tonight on the N S E F grant for the radios. We'll be voting for that in person and hybrid. For those people on Zoom who choose to not come to the auditorium and go on Zoom, when we get to the voting part, the registers will come to the screen and literally go, Mr. Daigle, how do you vote, yea or nay? Mr. Cunningham, how do you vote, yea or nay? And they'll count the votes that way. There are some towns doing pre-registrations. Stonington is having a town meeting by Zoom and then allowing people to come to the town hall in a car caravan and vote in the afternoon on a Saturday. I don't want to overcomplicate this. You know, again, we moved to a referendum anyway. So the big dollar thing, the seventy-seven million dollar question of do we accept this ballot or not, it will be decided at referendum. This is just two small items, so I think we'll we'll be okay. That's what I propose. That's the plan I'm sticking to. We've had a lot of various amounts of opinions on this. We've checked everything out with the town attorneys, of course, because it is confusing. And I had a council of government meeting where we discussed this at length. Every town is doing it differently. This, hopefully, the next first selectman will have to deal with COVID anymore and all that goes along with it. This is obviously very difficult. I appreciate your support on these motions. Are there any questions?
I'll put the motion out if I, Mark.
Yeah, there's a motion to change the dates first, right?
Right, and then have the call. Then it's then the call for something. First would be the change in budget approval schedule. Move that. As permitted by the governor's executive order due to COVID nineteen, the annual town budget meeting for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, normally held on the second Monday in May, in accordance with the Town of Eastline Charter, is hereby scheduled for the first Monday in May, which is May third, twenty twenty-one. Furthermore, the date of the referendum will be set for Wednesday, May nineteen, twenty twenty-one. This action will allow additional time for eligible individuals to vote for the annual town budget by no excuse absentee ballot.
I'll second that. Mark Salerno.
Motion and seconded. Thank you. Any further comments? Questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, I would just like to point out, by the way, the public hearing of the Board of Finance is is coming Monday, the twenty-sixth. It will be by Zoom. And selectmen often show up to that, so I encourage your participation. I understand it's what they're going through, I'm getting texts and updates, so it would be very interesting. You all might want to switch over and pay attention as well on some of the cuts. Kevin, is there a second motion?
Yes, now, this is the annual town meeting notice. Town of Eastline Notice of Hybrid Annual Town Meeting. Notice is hereby given of the annual town meeting to be held on Monday, May third, twenty twenty-one, at the Eastline High School Auditorium, thirty Chesterfield Road, Eastline, Connecticut, at seven P M. In accordance with the governor's executive orders due to COVID nineteen, the meeting will be a hybrid meeting to be held via Zoom and in person. Those qualified to vote in a town meeting have the option to attend and vote in person, and those attending via Zoom may vote with a show of hand. The following items will be acted upon. Number one, to review and discuss the budget for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-one, as recommended by the Board of Finance. A, in accordance with chapter seven point three of the town charter, the moderator shall adjourn the annual budget meeting to a referendum on the voting machine. The budget resolution will be submitted to the persons qualified to vote in a town meeting by referendum by machine vote, which referendum shall take place on May nineteen, twenty twenty-one, at the Eastline Community Center from eight A M. to eight P M. Two, to adopt a ten-year capital plan. Three, special appropriation, forty-four thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars, twenty twenty-one Nuclear Safety Emergency Preparedness Grant. Four, to conduct such other business as may be, as may properly come before the meeting. Zoom link will be posted on the Town of Eastline's website five days before the meeting dated in Eastline, Connecticut, twenty, this twenty-first day of April, twenty twenty-one, Eastline Board of Selectmen.
Mark Salerno, second.
Thank you, Mr. Salerno. Any further comments? Questions about? Yes, ma'am.
I think for us, I think we we understand what we're doing, but this is rather complicated, I think, for many in the community to follow. I understand that we do have a new assigned reporter now. So I would hope that as first selectman, you'd make a point to try to get a feature story in on this to try to further the explanation for the general public.
It's a great suggestion, Roseanne, and I will do just that. She is, by the way, we do have a new reporter in town. So the day is after eight month lapse. So she's she's fantastic. She's got a lot of experience. Been impressed with her professionalism and her knowledge of how to write a story already. So I will reach out to her, and I would think that there would be an interest story anyway that they might, they might even do a story on the variety of different ways that towns are dealing with this. Because it's a big topic of conversation at Council of Governments.
Mark, outside of the newspaper article, is there any other means of communication that we want to employ that we don't normally deploy?
I can write a little feature and put it on the top and front page and flashing lights and neon colors on the top of the webpage. And that's, you know, that's about what we can do. Generally, people pick that up and throw it all over Facebook and all that. I I've gotten away from all that negativity. So, but yeah, we can, we can do that. I, we're following standard practice. We've changed a little bit of the dates, but we're going to have a town meeting. We're going to go to referendum. So, you know, we're we're almost really back to normal with the exception of just changing some dates and allowing people to hybrid in or electronically participate. So, yeah, yeah, last year was very confusing in that there wasn't a town meeting. There wasn't a referendum. We decided, so, anyway. Any other questions? Thanks for following along. Great, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Were there any abstentions? That carries unanimously, and we will, we will carry out your wishes and do your best to spread the word. And we will, as we get closer, we'll be publishing the Zoom link for people to participate. Again, I don't anticipate a substantial increase. It might be a zero budget by the time they're done with this tonight. I don't anticipate any hostility from the public as far as budgets and all this goes, and our one item, even the capital plan, there's not much on capital for this coming year. So other than a lot of granted low CIP things, we do have, of course, the the fire engine coming from the antique is on the capital plan, but generally those are passed, and then when they come for us through appropriations, and then we go to that town meeting, that's when we might have some public comment on specific items. So there you go. I want to now switch over to a short discussion from Dave Putnam, and I, Todd Donovan's been in and out. He's the, he's kind of chairing a subcommittee over there at Parks and Rec. I don't know if he's out right now, but Dave, you want to talk about some items that the Parks and Rec have been talking about using American relief funds?
Right, so one of the, one of the things that's come up with that is the commission has looked at the Darryl Pond property as a way to enhance our recreational facilities in our community. And I know Todd is coming back from Philadelphia on a train, so he's been in and out. And I don't know if he's there or not, but our, the Parker Rick Commission has appointed a subcommittee to look at and to poll and survey the public on potential uses of the property at Darryl Pond. And many of you know, it's in our plan of conservation and development to look at that parcel of land for recreational purposes. And there's three hundred acres there, two hundred of those acres are conservation easement. The other hundred acres are kind of open for interpretation. So with that being said, we've started the subcommittee, the, at the last Parker Rick Commission meeting, a subcommittee was appointed to start those further discussions. A survey has been put out online. We have four hundred and twenty-seven responses to that survey what are, what people would like to see up there as far as amenities and as far as answerments are concerned. Out of those four hundred and twenty-seven surveys, sixty-three percent of those are Eastline residents. So it is open to everybody. Other than that, we're kind of looking at some short-term expenses right off the bat, and I think would be really important. The parking up there, which was enhanced a few years ago, is really lacking now for, I think we can get eight to ten cars up there. I know Bill Shear has put a plan together to to increase the parking up there to at least forty slots, and that's in the neighborhood of seventy-five thousand dollars. The other thing I think that is really important is if we are going to look to do something up there, that we do it correctly. And with that, I think a master plan needs to be developed, and we've reached out and got one vote on that so far from T O Design and Institute Architect. That's in the neighborhood between twenty-one and twenty-five thousand. It's just a quote to do that, but I think that's really important as a start, because I have an idea where where things should go, and other people on the committee have, you know, ideas of where maybe a disc golf should go. We've talked about a dog park. We've talked about improvements to the hiking. We've talked about roller tracks for bikes and that kind of thing. So, but for me to put it on, and look at, I think we really need to get this done correctly. And this landscape architect will take all that information and put a solid plan together. And we want to make sure that that property stays as new as possible. We've had meetings already with the Pollinator Club, with the birders, and with the people concerned about the bunnies and and that kind of thing with the endangered species. So with that being said, I think that's our short-term, long-term goal within to enhance what is already up there. It's a great facility. It really could be a gem for not only our residents, but people in there. We've had a ton of interest. People have come forward and willing to volunteer their time to design a disc golf course. You know, we've got people reach out to us as far as probably maybe volunteering time to put in on some biking, roller tracks, the field courses for pedal bikes and BMX bikes. So that's kind of where we're at. I know there's some monies out there for for improvements for park improvements and for healthy lifestyles. I think this would be a great place to be able to put some of those monies forward. So open to any questions, anything that, you know, the selectmen want to ask me, or, and I know Todd's in and out. He just texted me. He doesn't, he doesn't connection, but he's on, he's on the, he's on the call here.
He is on the call?
He's on the call, yeah.
Okay. Great.
Dave, our question would be, when could, I think a lot of the concern with the the disc golf thing is too, if you don't think it's a golf course. And it's going to involve removal of trees and a whole lot of, you know, things that might be nice for to have for some of the animals up there and so forth. But I think as soon as that can be dispelled, I think you'll get a lot less resistance because
Absolutely.
That's something concerned, and I think I've shared that with you as well.
Right, and so, yeah, so the disc golf, it really uses enhances the tree lines and fairway per se, they have trees that they like to go around and as obstacles and stuff. So it's not like a regular golf course where it's fifty yards wide by three hundred yards long. The hole might be a hundred and fifty yards long, but it's only maybe two yards wide. And so they have different distance they throw and different distance, and that kind of thing. So the impact to the area is very little as far as removing trees or anything along those.
I, you know, Dave convinced me after many discussions on the subject that, I don't actually know if I can credit you, Dave, on this, but your idea of bringing in the the landscape architect or the the open space architect will say, if these are the things you're thinking about, this is where they should go. And part of this was Dave talking about it, doing it right and making sure you're laying it out. You have a hundred acres up there that is developable, two hundred acres, which is, as you know, put aside in a conservation easement that we can't touch. But not only Dave's talking about that, but then I'm also getting special interest groups and and great people, but special interest groups, and David mentioned them. A cotton till rabbit population is up there, and I guess they're kind of been, not endangered, but protected by Connecticut, and there's a very natural habitat there. There's the bee pollinator group. There's a butterfly monarch butterfly thing going on up there. And you know what? You I said it earlier, it's not about bricks and mortar all the time. Sometimes it is about open space and the quality of life and some of that, you know, this is people's interests, and and we can, we can accommodate everybody on this. So let's, let's bring in the expert who might say, this is where the parking should go. This is what should be preserved because it's a natural habitat, and this is where, if you would build recreation, where that would go. And I would recommend that we put that high on the list when we're talking about American Rescue Funds, that we do suggest funding a study and then holding money aside on anything that we think was, it would be worthy should the study. By the way, we need a parking lot up there, no matter what. We should have a study done to say where the parking lot should be. But but we have spaces for ten or eight or ten cars up there, and many, many more people are using those trails right now in that open space. And when we run out of parking, there's no room on Mosley Road. We don't want them parking all the way down on Route one. That's not, it's a very dangerous place to park a car on the side of the road. There's no place to go. So we do need the space up there. And the suggestion of thirty or forty spaces has been made, and I couldn't support that more. Very important, so.
And I know you just stressed it, but I would hate to, you know, we got this beautiful piece of land up there, and if we don't do it right, I think we could open ourselves up for a lot of bad things down the road, I guess, would be my, my thing. And that would be my, I really would feel more comfortable with going that way than piecemealing it together. You know, a dog park should go here, or, you know, and then what we did is we took away the pollinator area or, you know, something else that had been initially. So I really, you know, I think that would be money well spent, would be my risk.
It's a good start.
Can you guys hear me by any chance? Can you guys hear me at all?
Yeah, we got you, Todd.
Hey, guys, if I go out, I'm really sorry. I just wanted to add a couple of things. Hey guys, if I go out, I'm really sorry. I just wanted to add a couple of things really quick. I'm in full agreement that I think the master plan being created probably should be step one. I too would not like to, to jump into this. I, I prefer to do it right. The parking lot, I, I would also agree there regardless of whether or not some enhancement gets done up in that area. I do think that the parking lot should probably be something we should look at in regards to taking care of just for the hikers or the mountain bikers alone. In regards to what we have on the survey, I want to be, you know, forthcoming by, by letting you know that the disc golf that, that gets a lot of support online. In regards to development, I, I hate using that word, developing the 100 acres that we have up there. I think we want to promote the word enhancement. What we're trying to do is enhance what is already there in regards to the natural beauty. And a lot of things that we have on that list, you know, the bike tracks, you know, rock climbing, et cetera, would probably need development. Disc golf is really just an enhancement of what's already there. If you were walking in trails and, and weren't aware of a disc golf course being there, you really may not know. It's not, it's not in your face. It really, really does blend nicely with the natural beauty of what already exists. So in regards to, you know, taking down acres and acres and acres of trees, I, I think, you know, some of us may be misunderstood at the process and, and how the golf course is developed. Obviously we will find out more as we move forward. So I just wanted to add a couple of those little points there. And in regards to disc golf too, it's, it's a family, family thing, you know? Kids can do it, parents can do it, grandparents can do it. So like Dave mentioned, I, I think our ideas for this park will only enhance not only the town of East Lime, but the state of Connecticut. People go there, people are going to continue to go there. You know, I think if we are afforded the opportunity to have some money to put into that particular piece of property, to have something on this side of 95 would be spectacular. So I'm for it. I'll do whatever I can to help this process move along. So thank you.
Thank you Todd and safe travels back home to your family. You're a hardworking guy. And, and, and very dedicated to your hometown. Much appreciated. Any other comments about, or questions about Dave's organization?
I'll, I'll just say, I really think the master plan approach is the right thing. That depending on the activities that are repurposed up for that property will drive the size of parking needed. My other concern though is the size of parking and the amount of traffic going on to and off of Mostoli Road, which is not a very improved road, has to be considered. Especially if this becomes an attraction for more than East Lime residents. And if parking is 40, 50, 60 spaces, whatever it may be, and I'm not saying that's the plan, but coming up with that master plan, defining what purposes will drive potentially the, a usage of it. And all these are great ideas, but the master plan is getting it right as Dave stated. And I, I think that will add value and eliminate any missteps that may came up by taking a piecemeal approach.
I would agree with what Paul just said. I mean, it's great, but I'm sure when you do develop these master plans, there's somebody that can give us an idea. And based on their experience, people, companies that do this give you an idea of what the traffic flow will be. And I know especially at the southern exit from Mosley Road, that, that is a tight, very tight area in there. You know, and that's where you have to get a recommendation. Would we have to consider possibly turning that into a one-way or something like that? But good points, Paul.
Yeah. And, and things like maintenance, you know, one, one purpose may be a higher maintenance activity than another purpose. And you'll get that from the professionals when they, they develop the plan.
Paul, what we've learned in regards to a lot of the suggestions on the surveys, there is a that exists within these outdoors men or outdoors people, outdoor families. A lot of this work is volunteer work in regards to maintenance moving forward. So again, depending on what it is in regards to the enhancement, a lot of that maintenance moving forward is, is done by these groups that are created or that will be created similar to what we're doing here in town with the subcommittee, which will ultimately lead to, you know, we haven't officially named it yet, but potentially the Friends of Darrow's Pond, which we will open up to, you know, hopefully dozens of people. We, we appreciate and respect all opinions for and against. So.
I could see this being a community approach similar to what we heard earlier tonight with the Giving Garden. There'll be people interested in being able to, to support and sustain the sustainability of, of the activities that are up there on this property, which will benefit many, many residents and others as well.
Hey, I, I agree with all that. I think the master plan is the way to go. You have Mark already mentioned, there's already a lot of competing interest up there. So I think that'll allow everything to get on the table. I agree with Mosley Road, that's going to need to be part of that, that study. And just so you're aware, there was some discussion at the planning commission meeting the other day. There was a presentation about the Eastern Cotton Tail Bunnies in that land. And I think there's, there may be, you may be hearing from some members of planning that may want to be involved on some of this. I know some, some of them did some, some work on the P O C D. So don't be surprised if you hear from them. That's all I have to say. When, when you, when you consider the parking and I think it's a town, the town staff's going to look at that. You may want to consider some pervious surfaces. I think we learned a lot, you know, the whole parking lot we did down at Hole in the Wall Beach, you know, that was kind of an experimental parking lot to study different types of pervious surfaces. So maybe we can learn something from there and do something that was successful down there over here. That's all.
Um, good, good comments, Mark. Yeah, well aware of the cotton tail bunny people and, and the pollinators. And that's, again, that's, that comes into, we are, we're well aware of that. Dave's well aware, trust me. And yeah, and they wanted to come and speak to us about, about this. It's not necessary. We're going to have a master plan that will, that will take into account many, many different people in, in special interests. Special interests sometimes has come across as a negative thing in the press and all that. Absolutely not. We need these people. We need these people to, to have this interest and for us to protect that and, and learn from it, you know? Pollinators especially. I, I learned, I've learned a lot already from Marjorie Mekoff and her passion. It's great. It's great. We'll get, we'll, we'll protect the bunnies, the bees, the birds, the butterflies. They're all bees. Is one more bears? No, no. It's all good. It's all good. Dave, I think your, your master plan is getting a lot of thumbs up and this is a great thoughtful approach to starting the process up there. And that's appreciated.
And Mark, I mean, and just to follow, we, we still haven't transferred the, it over to Parks and Rec. So.
Correct.
And maybe this study will help us.
And that'll be part of the process. I think we do need to do that. There was some wording that I think, you know, I think the lawyers had their hands full with a few things that have been thrown at them that, that thrown at me. But yeah, we got to get to that Parks and Rec becoming Parks and Rec property. They already maintain it. They pick up the garbage. They, they, they trim back and all that. And of course, I probably, actually you guys probably plow up there. It's a parking lot, right?
Yeah, yeah. They, they make sure there's access because of the
emergencies, et cetera. So you're already kind of running it like a parks system, like it's part of the park system. There is the issue about the 200 acres that we already have a conservation easement on with the Friends of Ozogutia Hills. So we're not sure that we want to move that over to a town agency under control. We'll work those details out, but it's 100 acres that we're focused on anyway. Thank you.
One more, one more thing. Hey Dave, just while we're talking American rescue plan, I've heard from a few of the youth, youth, the sports organizations that there's some interest in doing stuff. With American Rescue Plan, if you don't mind, if you have any needs from the youth services, if we could organize them through you that you think are worthy to bring before the board.
And, and a couple of that are hurting for like score, you know, some scoreboards at Vets, which is 1975. They're looking to replace something like that. So not a whole lot of money there, but that's one group that has reached out to me regarding that. So I can certainly, you know, coordinate that and.
Yeah, that, that if you wouldn't mind doing that, if there's any other organizations that could come through you. And if you think it's worthwhile, that would be, that would be helpful.
Yeah, we need to hear that, that you're probably your inventory list, not just Darryl Pond, Dave, but at some point when we're starting to, when this is starting to get real, after we get through the budget process, we have money in hand. We're going to talk about scoreboard at Vets. We were talking about new lighting somewhere.
At Briarbrook, yeah, yeah. You know, we, some of our lamps are really old and they, they do need to be, you know, they're down the road. We're going to have to do it. The, you know, the lighting and at Briarbrook was done in the late eighties. So we're
Yeah.
We're coming up on, you know, 30, you know, 30 plus years on those lights, which is a long time to run those. So.
I know the softball field is lit down at Vets, right? Does that have, is that been updated, those lights?
It has, it has been updated recently. They have the metal poles where, where we're at Briarbrook, where wooden poles and you know, coming to the end of their lives as well. So put some of that together. I'll certainly get that information.
That'd be great. Thank you. Thank you. So we'll, we'll continue discussions on Parks and Rec again. I, I envision three stages. We've talked about this, the need part of, of food and, and mental health. We talked about that. And Dave, you were instrumental in putting that together for us. I think that's a critical part. The second part is town facilities that we need to make sure are okay. We have three dams in town that need to be rebuilt. And we're being told by the state, one of them is in significant disrepair and needs to be done immediately. This is perfect money for that. You know, there's discussion, the newspaper Mike DeMaro had a field day comparing our facilities to Waterford's. I wish, I wish I could have their 20 extra million dollars a year that they have in their budget. We could do a whole lot with 20 million dollars a year. But, but our, our baseball field, our, our varsity baseball field has been a joke in the league since the first time it flooded, probably the year after they built it. It was built in a swamp, I understand. It does not drain. It needs to be done. It needs to be done properly. We've tried to fix it several times. It is a board of ed property. But I'm not sure they're going to have the funds for it. So maybe we can work together and figure out a solution. We've tried to work with them. Dave stuck his neck out.
Yeah.
Dave, I'm trying to be nice. You stuck your neck out to try to fix that a couple of years ago and you got your head chalked off. So we backed off from that, but we do, if this funding sitting there and there's a field that is unplayable for 50% of the varsity season, someone should maybe make that suggestion that we go out and fix that.
It's 100%. They're busting the kids down for practices down to the town fields.
100% of the season?
That was, we were told it was the whole season.
The whole season's gone?
Yep. That's what we've been told.
Mark, Steve Hargis said last week that the, the facilities director decided shut the field totally down.
It's unsafe.
Is it, is it true guys that they're, the senior class this year at East Lime High School has never played a game, a varsity game on that field?
I don't think so. I think Todd, obviously next, last year probably no one did for obvious reasons. But I think previous to that, when they would have been sophomores, that field was usable for at least.
But most of the seniors were, were sophomores and they're probably on JV. More than likely, maybe.
That's, that's part, yeah. Good point.
I know Todd, you probably didn't see a lot of JV ball. Just saying.
I'll go anywhere.
Okay. Well, thanks. This is a good start to a conversation. And so, so the third, so the tier two is fix what we have and, and make better what we have and, and things in disrepair, fix. And then the third tier would be add and enhance, enhance open spaces. I like your comment, Todd, about we're not developing, we're enhancing. I love that. That's, thank you for the correction. Absolutely. And, and, and add, and add to our town. But that's probably going to be the third tier down. We got things to do. We have people to feed. We have people to fix. And we have dams and baseball fields and other things to fix too. So but that, in my opinion, should be how our discussions go in about another month when we were getting actually pretty serious about this. This 1.9 million dollars we'll have to spend. So. And we got to do it right. And we won't rush into it. Any other comments? Dave, thanks.
Yeah, I just, you know, if, if we're going to do a study, can you hear me? Yeah. If we're going to do a study and, and on a master plan, which I, which I think is a great idea. I think it'll be very important to make sure there's avenues for public comment and then it's adequately publicized in the various places. So we receive all the public comment that really is, that the public's entitled to and that we need to make a good decision.
Yeah. And that'll be written into when we go out to an official proposal for, for landscaping services. That'll be outlined in that. Certainly they got to do so many, they got to conduct so many public forums and get people's opinion. We have the survey, we can, and we plan on having a couple of forums, you know, down the road, obviously, but yes, we want to do everything the right way. So.
Thank you.
Again, you, you do this big plan and then you forget about the bunnies and then you're going to start all over again. Or you, you know, whatever, whatever. No, we got to bring everybody in. And, and, and that property is wedged in between two or three neighborhoods. Darrow, Darrow's Ridge, Village Drive and not in the back Nottingham Hills. Just because you can't see it from the parking lot. Don't forget, there's a lot of houses that back up into that. And while that's preserved space, it's still adjacent space. So we, neighbors, people live there, you know? Let, let's, let's make sure we hear from them.
Yeah, Mark, just so you know, we do have them on, we do have neighbors from those neighborhoods. I'm not sure about the third one yet, but we've, we've done our due diligence there to make sure that we've included some of the residents that surround that property.
Yeah, I threw out Nottingham Hills tonight, but I, I've talked to you about the Village Drive and, and Darrow. And I think that's important to make sure because they're, they're on top of the, the space that we're talking about enhancing. So good points all around. Any further comment on this? I'll let Dave go and, and, and Todd, or you can stick around of course, but we'll move on in our agenda then to ex officio reports.
Thank you.
Good night, Dave. I'll see you tomorrow. Mr. Daigle, do you have an ex officio report?
You're muted.
Muted?
Go figure. I apologize. Inland Wetlands, I had the shortest meeting of my tenure. And they only had one item on the agenda. They approved an application to do some timber harvesting on property on 57 Walnut Hill Road owned by Mr. Byaloons. And the Public Safety Building is moving along. They are trying to come through some change orders. They had a couple issues that were unresolved. One was the water supply that Tom brought in. I believe they've reached concurrence on how to, how to address that. And the other one is the, the trenching path from the building out, out to the road for the communications work. So town staff and the design agent are, are working through to finalize that scope of work to get that going. And they're going to be soon starting the external work to the building going forward. They do have a little bit of a delay with the delivery of the air handling unit, the new one, based on, you know, what's going on in America with manufacturing. But they're still moving ahead in town staff and our design architect and design firm and clerk of the works are very satisfied with the quality of the work that's being executed. So pending any questions, that completes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Salerno?
Planning, obviously Partridge Court came here, so they approved that and reduced the bond. There was, there was a presentation about the Eastern Cotton Tail Bunnies. Little discussion at Darryl Pond there following that. And lastly, they're, they're looking at their bylaws right now. Only thing to report from that is in their bylaws, they have the requirement to issue a town information for a town, town report, annual town report. So I just told them that they could just put, instead of it being required, if asked by the board of selectmen instead, since we haven't done a town report in a few years. instead, since we haven't done a town report in a few years. That's all I have to say. And they appointed a um, planning alternate. They had a resignation a few weeks ago.
Terrific, right. Um, uh, Mr. Cunningham is up next on my board here. Mr. Cunningham, do you have a report tonight?
Well, I, I did attend the Wellsco meeting uh, last week. And uh, nothing that directly affects East Line. There are two uh, new dock applications on the Waterford side of the river. Uh, two of the waterfront properties are seeking uh, approval to put out docks. Uh, but the, the bigger picture is uh, I I think there's gonna be, you know, there's just more and more pressure on uh, the river and the waterways, uh, particularly with this COVID. I mean, you can't buy a boat and you can't find a dock slip anywhere. Um, so I think we're gonna see a lot more activity as families are finding that, you know, you buy a boat, you go floating in the river and uh, you don't have to be near anybody else. So I think we need to be aware of that going forward. Um, that there'll probably be more activity on the river than we've seen in the past. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Mrs. Mrs. Hardy?
Hi, uh, Commission on Natural Resources canceled their meeting. Zoning canceled their meeting for tomorrow night. I'm not taking it personally. Uh, and Commission on Aging, uh, there really wasn't anything new presented. And I believe that they have their session with Board of Finance this evening. So that's it for me.
Terrific. I think they had their session already, but they're deliberating at the Board of Finance tonight. So we'll see what's left of the town. Um, uh, Mr. Siri?
Yes, um, Parks and Rec, I don't think I have to give one. We already got their report. So you heard pretty much. The only thing outside of that is uh, they approved their vendors for the year. The same person who's doing all the uh, the the ice cream betting for the last thirty years is gonna be back uh, as always at Hole in the Wall and McCook's too. And uh, last month, we had the uh, score presentation. Um, and uh, it was a request for us and Dan and I talked and we thought we'd like to uh, engage them further and talk to them further to, you know, further their discussion and discuss some of their concerns with them. And then we could, and I could report back to the board at some later point. Dan, you're okay with that, right?
Absolutely. I'd like to be involved.
Okay, that's it for that.
Thank you, um, Mr. Mr. Siri, Deputy First Selectman, Mr. Siri. Thanks for helping me out. Um, when you can, always. This, this item about the score thing, I I'm wondering if this is the right time. I I'll, I guess I'll point you both as a subcommittee. A subcommittee of two who will work with score and and identify items where we can enhance our um, our equity and inclusion uh, policies or procedures or or whatever in town, the buzzwords. Um, I'm not inclined to uh, bring the uh, the item that they brought forward to us forward. Um, and I haven't seen a lot of support for that necessarily, including from our town attorneys, but I do want to work with groups because um, it's the right thing to do. It's the right thing to do. So um, I ask you guys periodically to come and and make a report. Let me know. I'll put it right on the agenda and you can make a report about what's going on. Okay? Thank you. Thank you. Great. I don't have the I'm sorry?
Thank you, Kevin and Dan.
Yeah, thanks. Um, and and report back. I, I um, I don't have a, a, a lengthy report at all. There's a little confusion with the Memorial Day Parade apparently was uh, scheduled to happen. The other evening, they they voted to not have it, but I think they had some erroneous uh, assumptions and feedback. So I spoke to them today. I'm trying to get them to reinstate it uh, and have a Memorial Day Parade. We could do that safely down Main Street, down the hill and around the corner, as we've done for so many years. And um, and and people who want to come and feel comfortable coming can come and find room on the sidewalk where they can socially distance with or without masks, you're outdoors. It'll be past May twentieth and all that stuff. I, it'll be um, I I hope it happens. I I think um, it'll be a nice sign of life in our little town. Um, and more to come on that, of course, um, I'll let you know. Of course, we often march in that parade as, as a unit, as together. Um, a, a unit of six of us when we can. So that's all I have. It's been a long meeting and I gotta go jump into a longer one. Um, so if there's um, well, I'll ask for public comment. Anyone wish to speak? You have any citizen or anybody who likes to speak in the Board of Selectmen's evening, raise your hand, unmute yourself, jump up and down, scream. Hearing not, uh, public comment, uh, selectmen response, probably none, since there was no comment. So we'll have a motion.
That was very, I'll move to adjourn.
Second, Mark.
Thank you all for your participation tonight. Really good conversations. I very, very much appreciate working with each and every one of you. Appreciate it. You have a good night.